What is it? Six forty eight.
Six, yep.
Something like that. So I'm calling the regular planning board meeting to order. And we have one A and R in front of us. Is there anybody who would like to speak to that? Please state your name.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Clower. I'm an attorney with Ahmed Law Firm in Falmouth. I was expecting Tom Bunker. But I'll do my best to fill in capably.
There he is. He's this, West Falmouth.
I relinquish my duties to Tom. For the record, I'm Tom Bunker. BSS designer prepared this plan for Jay Austin. His approval not required. Basically, we're shifting lot lines around. There is a, one lot here, is Lot 1A, that's crosshatched. There's a few, a few things going on. There's Lot 1A that's right here, a lot 3A where this house is, number 10 Loomis Lane.
Three A.
And then there is a lot which is, I'm not sure which is considered Lot 4 or 5 here, which is a sixteen Loomis Lane.
Yep.
So they're now basically two houses on it, removing the lot lines, taking part of this Lot 1A and adding it to 3A, which will become Lot 2B. That's forty-three thousand, four hundred square feet, more than forty thousand square feet of upland. And then parcel X here, which is currently part of Lot 3A, will move over to be combined with Lots 4 and 5, and create this Lot 1B. So we end up with Lot 1B, which is sixteen Loomis Lane, Lot 2B, which is ten Loomis Lane. And then there's another parcel which is undersized, not suitable at the corner of Lot 2. They have the required frontage area width in this zoning district.
All right. Thanks, Tom. Does anybody have any questions with Tom? Yeah?
Can you tell us where this is? The locus portion of our map doesn't have showing what part of town it is. Where?
This is in West Falmouth, National Weeda Street, you know, where the, the bridge over Mashapackwood Creek. This, this is up at the, sort of the far reaches. It's on the, on the seaward side of National Weeda Street, right by that, the bridge.
Isn't that supposed to be in the top left-hand corner there?
No, it's actually the registry block.
Okay, all right.
I don't, I don't have a locus map on this.
Any other questions? Yeah, Bob?
I take it that the lot lines are being moved because the garages on the existing properties are a little too close to the property line? Is that one of the reasons why? Because it seems they're both shifting to the right on?
Property line is moving over here. I mean, the garage is not too close to the property line. But what is probably going to happen is that this lot has two piers.
Okay.
So you know what I mean? And, you know, what they might do is take one pier and move it over just a little bit. They wanted to move the lot line over so that you could just move the pier over twenty or thirty feet to get it onto his lot line.
Okay.
Yeah, Ralph?
Yes, Mr. Bunker. I'm, I'm a little bit confused. The, the solid line is the current lot line on the right-hand side, or that's the proposed?
No, it's the proposed lot.
Okay. So then?
The dash line is the current line.
Ah, okay. All right. I see. So then part of the conservation restriction will then be on Lot 2B?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. It'll just be an undevelopable portion of Lot 2B.
And Lot 1A will not, is not buildable. I, I see it. Okay, thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions?
Nope.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I, I think that we accept.
Endorse.
Endorse. Do I have a second?
Second?
Been moved and seconded that we endorse the A and R. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed? Stay. Okay. So, as of right now, I am going to adjourn the regular meeting. And we have a few minutes before the scheduled seven o'clock joint meeting with the planning board and the Board of Selectmen. And I'd like to tell anybody who might be here for the resiliency part, portion of the agenda that was noted in the newspaper, that was not correct. There will be nothing on the agenda about resiliency tonight.
No.
It is simply the Cape Cod Commission presentation of the Springbars Road eventual development and the Board of Selectmen's five-year plan. So if you're here for those two things, that's great. Okay.
Yeah, they, they weren't on the agenda, so I couldn't, uh...
It's on my agenda.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I, I just got mine from there.
It's good to see you again.
Okay.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. So I'm calling the joint meeting of the Selectmen and the Planning Board to order at this point in time. And the first thing on our agenda is the presentation of, I believe it is the final of the Cape Cod Commission report on the Springbars Road project, the assessment of it.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Kristy Sanatore. I'm Deputy Director with the Cape Cod Commission. And I just wanted just to kind of open this and give you a little bit of context for the project, which I know you're all familiar with at this point. But this is one of the reset projects that we work on at the Cape Cod Commission. We've worked on lots of reset projects across the Cape. We've worked in Chatham. We're currently working in Hyannis, currently working in Sandwich. And so it's really an opportunity for us to go into the towns and oftentimes the, the, we're, we're called upon to try to amplify some of the town's planning departments across the Cape. Falmouth has an excellent planning department. They have really talented staff here. And so we really haven't been needed much in the town of Falmouth. So we're really excited at this opportunity to, to work with the town of Falmouth. So it's really a great opportunity for collabora, collaboration with our Cape Cod Commission staff and with their town staff. I know a significant amount of research and study and work has been done on the Springbars Road area. And so this was a really great opportunity for us to bring some of that information together and to add some of our Cape Cod Commission staff expertise and information just to give the town the tools it needs to make some of the decisions, the important decisions you need to make about some of the development on this parcel and in the surrounding area. Our staff has spent a significant amount of time over the last several months putting this assessment together, and in particular Sarah Kordjev and Paul Richinskis, who should really be commended for the amount of time and effort they, they put, they took putting this together. I also wanted to thank the, the town staff and the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board and the Falmouth Community Preservation Committee, and in particular Heather Harper, who's provided significant amount of guidance and gave us this opportunity to be able to work closely with the town of Falmouth. So with that, I just wanted to turn it over to Sarah Kordjev, who will walk you through the changes and the final report.
Thanks for having me again. I was last here in April presenting the draft report to you. And I guess my first question, though, is can we dim the lights right here to make it easier to see the presentation? Great, thank you, Ralph. No, I just have to make sure I know how to work this.
Point it at the screen.
Okay, so to advance the slide, I should have gone over this with Brian first, sorry.
Yeah, you pointed at the screen.
Pointed at the screen, really?
I think so.
No, it must be the projector.
Good thanks, Brian.
Yeah. I know I won't.
Apologize, I should have. Okay, just as you move.
Found Stoffey's shirt onto the computer.
My apologies, okay.
Stand by, Brian.
All right. So I wanted to start off just with a brief refresher of what the scope of this project was. It really involved three major parts. First was looking at the Springbars Road site itself, which is outlined in red on the image on the screen, looking at infrastructure needs and resource constraints associated with that parcel. Also, second, assessing the financial viability of the thirty-unit affordable housing proposal for that property. And third, looking at a much broader study area, the entire area that's shown on that graphic there. So the greater neighborhood around Springbars Road site and making some recommendations on how to make some changes there or encourage changes that would support the neighborhoods there and any plans that the town has for the Springbars Road site. So I was asked to focus primarily on the changes that have been made to the report since I was here in April presenting the draft report. And some of those changes are, we added an executive summary, so that you can read that in shorter order if you'd like. Most significantly, I think, we addressed the new flood zones that have been proposed with the flood insurance rate maps that came out this summer. And that does have an impact on several of the sections that were developed in the report. We also updated the housing feasibility analysis. The numbers in that report changed slightly, but not dramatically since the draft report. In the site analysis of the property itself, we also addressed the flood zone changes shown in the new firm maps. And also, we expanded upon our recommendations in the final land use analysis for the greater study area. I want to start off just with the natural resource section. This is how the report starts, and it brings us immediately to probably the most significant change in the project, which is those flood insurance rate maps. This is a graphic from the draft, from the draft report, and it shows in red the flood zones that are current today, which are what were in place when we were developing the draft report. And in blue, you see the resource buffers to wetlands and to Little Pond there. This graphic, which you'll find in the, in the final report, illustrates how the flood zones have changed from what's, what exists today to what's proposed. On the left hand, you see three images here that highlight the Springbars Road parcel. On the left-hand side, you see the existing flood insurance rate maps with yellow designating the A-zone in, A flood zone. The center graphic shows the proposed flood maps, again with yellow showing the A-zone there. And you can see that those significant gray areas that we see, we saw when we were preparing the draft report, which were areas outside of the flood zone, are for the most part no longer outside of the flood zone. It really did have a significant impact. There are two sort of teardrop-shaped areas you can see in the center map that are still outside of the, of the A-zone. Those are essentially mounds on the property. And as you can see there, a very small portion of it, it would be difficult to develop outside of the flood zone, just on those two portions. The graphic on the right, which shows the blue and the purple, that shows, the purple is meant to illustrate the change in the flood zone, the A-zone area. So any purple you see is new A-zone under the proposed new flood maps. The little bits of green you see on the right-hand map, those are actually areas that are proposed to come out of the flood zone. And these changes, I should just note, are all based on better information about topography in these areas, much more detailed topographical information than was had in the past. So other sections of the report, which have not seen a lot of change, the chapter on wastewater and water supply, which identified the need to bring infrastructure to the Springbars Road site in order to accommodate any new development there, and with included cost estimates for if sewer was brought to the property outside of the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan, which would ultimately sewer the Little Pond watershed in perhaps 2017, that was the estimated date. So if sewer were brought to the property prior to that, that cost estimate was about $440,000. And if water were brought to the site also, there was a range of $124,000 to $161,000 should that cost. And the major recommendation really in this section was to coordinate any sewer plans with the town's comprehensive wastewater management plan to ensure that the town's preference for gravity systems would be accommodated and also that there wouldn't be any duplication of design or effort. The transportation section in the report also did not change very much. We, in this section, we identify the, the benefits of this location in terms of its ease of access to a wide variety of amenities and facilities. But at the same time, notes the need to improve some pedestrian facilities in the area. They're kind of inconsistent. There are some, some areas in proximity to the Springbars Road site that have newly constructed sidewalks that are in very good condition, others that are not in good condition, and specifically identified the need for a safe crosswalk across Springbars Road connecting the development, the proposed development to the Falmouth Mall area. Moving on to the housing feasibility and viability study, Paul Richinskis on our staff, who's our affordable housing specialist, prepared this section of the report. And ultimately, he compared eight similar projects that have been developed in the region in the last three years and looked at their costs and, and issues in their creation and compared them with the potential proposal for the Springbars Road site. And looking at those eight projects, he found an average cost per unit of about $300,000, whereas looking at the proposed thirty-unit affordable housing project for Springbars Road site, the average cost would be about $350,000 per unit. And ultimately, a total development cost for the Springbars Road project, the thirty units, were about $10.6 million. And that is up a little bit from the draft report that I believe had, was nine point five, or just under nine point five million. Ultimately, the findings in this section are that the project is financially feasible. However, it would really, it would require the key funding source to be low-income housing tax credits, which would fund sixty to sixty-five percent of the project typically, which in this case would be on the order of $6 million in tax credit equity. It would also require, along with the first mortgage, additional funding through Department of Housing and Community Development sources. We recommend that the town look into transfer of development rights, or TDR, as a possible way to offset costs. There's the potential to sell additional development rights from this property and to developers for, for developing in other locations. I'll get into that a little bit, a little bit more as we progress through to the next section of this, of this presentation. But ultimately, ultimately, another, the two recommendations are that if a town does choose to go forward with this project, they should meet with DHCD or Department of Housing and Community Development staff to discuss the flood zone issues and whether that would have an impact on potential funding sources. They should also consider putting out an RFP for the project as really the best way of measuring what the development community feels about the viability and feasibility of the project. The final section of the report deals with site analysis, first of the Springbars Road site and then of the larger study area. We identified issues and opportunities related to the, the site itself. Primarily, it is not limited by zoning. You're proposing, or the proposal is for thirty affordable units on this site and actually under zoning, there's an allowance for up to sixty-six multifamily units on this property. It has great proximity to community facilities and services, as I've already mentioned, proximity to open space, even right next door in the other half of the parcel that the town purchased. The primary limitations here really are due to natural resource buffers and most specifically to the flood zone delineation. In the draft report, you may recall, we laid out four possible site layout scenarios as just a way of illustrating some different ways that the site might be developed with an attention to trying to keep buildings outside of the flood zone as much as possible and also clustering them together to try to limit infrastructure costs. All of these, all four of these development scenarios, which initially were mostly outside of the flood zone, under the proposed flood zone maps, all of these areas would be mostly in the flood zone. So we did not really have, there's no way to identify configurations that would be outside of the flood zone really, based on the extent of the flood zone now. But what we did was calculate the amount of fill that could be brought in to raise the footprints of these buildings and their immediate area around them so that they would be one foot above base flood elevation. I should mention that these areas, the whole flood zone for this property is A-zone. It's, it's not velocity zones, or it's not an area where we're concerned about wave action. And the A-zone really identifies area, areas with a one percent annual chance of flooding or a twenty-six percent chance of flooding over the life of a thirty-year mortgage. They're sometimes referred to as a hundred-year flood, flood zones. But it's not prohibited to develop in these areas, so there is the potential either to raise the elevation of the site where the buildings are so that they could be up above base flood elevation, or alternatively to put non-living areas in the lower floors of the buildings so that the living space is actually raised up above base flood elevation. Though that can pose a problem with... Though that can pose a problem with accessibility to the, to the buildings. So I mentioned, we calculated the, the amount of fill that might be needed in each of these four development scenarios, and they range greatly. But the first scenario on the top left there, which orients the buildings along Springbars Road, we estimated about 9,000 cubic yards of fill would be needed to raise the elevation on that, in that instance. In the second scenario, where they're clustered in the formerly fenced-in parking area on the site, we estimated about 3,000 or 3,600 cubic yards of fill to raise the structures in that location. In scenario three, which is the bottom left, located in, where the buildings are located in the northwest corner of the site, we estimated about 7,000 cubic yards of fill to accommodate that development or to raise it up. And in the fourth scenario, where the buildings are grouped along the northeast corner of the lot, we estimated the smallest amount, about 2,600 cubic yards of fill to accommodate that site. This, given the concern about building in the flood zone areas, though, we really recommend that the town look seriously at the possibility of transfer of development rights. You have a transfer development rights, or TDR, bylaw already. It's not designed to allow exactly this type of transfer, but it could potentially be amended to facilitate that, whether you chose to simply transfer the addition, additional development rights above and beyond the 30 that are proposed on the site, or whether you would consider transferring all the development rights from the site. You could potentially sell development rights to affordable housing developers and allow them to, units to be moved to other appropriate parcels in the town, or you could sell them at market rate and use the proceeds from that to support affordable housing in the Then looking at the broader land use analysis of the site, of the study area, I'm sorry, we identified issues and opportunities beyond Springbars Road parcel itself. And some of the issues we identified were barriers to pedestrian movement through the area, acknowledging that this is a commercial area primarily, but it's surrounded by heavily and densely developed residential neighborhoods. So there is a real interest in moving people around here, but it's not, and it's, it's not always safe due to the quality of sidewalks in some locations and the lack of safe crosswalks. Congestion is also an issue, traffic congestion both on Route 28 and, and on some sections of Worcester Court. And also redevelopment, which seems to be a recognizable trend in this area. And redevelopment is a, could also be in the opportunity column because it provides you with an opportunity to make change. And at this point, though, the zoning for the area, for the Worcester Court area and sort of the area closer to the Springbars Road site, does not have zoning that's any different from what's along Route 28. And so the type of development that's allowed there, really, it would make it possible for Worcester Court to take on the character of Route 28. And I, I think that's not what, what we would recommend, and we'll go on to talk about that a little bit more. In terms of opportunities, this, this is a, a great location because of its proximity to the wide variety of facilities and community assets. Everything's from the harbor to the community center, to the beach. There are great opportunities to make pedestrian connections that make it easier for people to move through this area to all those assets. And also, there are some, some areas of the commercial zone here that have still neighborhood scale development, a much smaller scale of structure, smaller parking areas, and, and less traffic, sort of low-traffic generating uses that are an appropriate transition, if you will, from the higher-density commercial development to the residential areas here. So we end the study with a list of recommendations. First, to establish a transition area, which essentially follows the northern end of Worcester Court and allows it to be different from Route 28's commercial development, acknowledging that it could be a good connection from the denser commercial areas down to the, the more tightly-developed residential areas. And that would involve defining the appropriate uses for this area and appropriate scale, developing design guidelines potentially that would identify appropriate building setbacks and, and size and massing and the appropriate location of parking to make this area potentially mixed-use also with residential units above commercial in some cases. And so that's shown in the, let's see, this transition area in this graphic is shown with the blue dotted line that essentially follows the northern half of Worcester Court. And defining the building forms, the area where we would recommend that is shown with sort of a pinkish-red hatching that's following Worcester Court again. Another recommendation is to develop master plans for the three large commercial plazas that are in the immediate vicinity here. And those are outlined in, in sort of a gold color. All three of those plazas seem to have the potential for redevelopment in the future. And I think it's important that the town think about what your goals are for that, for those properties and establish them and, and get them on the table and into your zoning before, before you lose that opportunity. Also strengthening the pedestrian network, which I've talked about quite a bit already, I think, retaining the residential scale in, of areas where you have a much smaller sort of residential-friendly scale of building. There's a whole block along Route 28 between Springbars Road and Jones Road where most of the buildings are actually leftover from when, when this area had residences lining Route 28 rather than commercial properties. And that provides a nice relief from some of the other commercial development along the stretch, both visually as well as they're generally lesser-traffic generating uses. So for motorists, it could provide a way of sort of giving a break in the amount of, of traffic and the, the volume of traffic along the roadway there. Also, potentially putting together a transfer development rights plan for this area, whether you're moving some or all of the development rights from the Springbars Road parcel. We've identified with yellow dots some potential areas to move development rights to, potentially along the Worcester Court area where mixed-use might be appropriate. You could move residential units to the upper floors of commercial uses there. There are also other properties, I'm sure, in the community that would have similar access to amenities and resources that you might find to be appropriate for moving affordable housing or, or residential units to. Also expanding the green corridor that stretches from Little Pond north up to the new T-Ticket Park. That's an area where, which historically has been wet. It is still, you know, wet in some areas now. But as commercial, commercial plazas are redeveloped, it's, it would be valuable to think about ways to expand that green area, both as a connection, an amenity for people to actually travel along, a recreational amenity, but also possibly for future flood storage as sea level rise becomes an issue even more and more in the future. And finally, transportation safety improvements, which we go into great detail about in the plan or in the report, though they haven't really changed from the draft report, but recommended changes to some of the primary intersections here, including Springbars Road and Worcester Court. And with that, that's my summary, and I'm, we're happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Thank you, Sarah, very much. I think what we're going to do now is, we'll start with you guys for question asking. If you have any questions as to what Sarah has told us tonight, we'll move on through the planning board, and then we'll go to the public for questions.
My first question is, in regard to flood insurance, have you factored that into the unit cost? I know we're talking about $350,000 roughly, but the cost to carry those by the unit will increase, I would imagine, the monthly cost? Have you addressed that, or could you address that to us?
We did, yeah. I'm going to let Paul answer that. I do know that he, he looked into the, the potential cost for that.
Paul Rochenskes, Affordable Housing Specialist. I did look into it, Kevin, both on the development side, what the additional insurance would be just during the development period, as well as the operating budget. And there's still a lot of uncertainty in the market, but the best estimate I got from a tax credit developer was that basically the, the operating cost for insurance would double. So that's the reason that my estimate of the operating expenses for the project went from basically $7,300 a year to $7,800 a year. So it's basically a $500 per unit increase to reflect the additional insurance costs for being in a flood zone. So the final analysis did the best I could in terms of the information available, tried to address that increased cost.
Okay. And a follow-up on that while you're still there. It's not always necessarily true that you're able to achieve flood insurance, from what I understand. Is that something that the town would need to look into before it proceeded?
Well, that would be something that the developer would need to look into. So it'd really be, you know, if you did a request for proposal, you'd look for a developer, and it really would be the developer's responsibility to access the, the flood insurance and to find out whether it is feasible. The, the tax credit developer that I contacted had done a number of projects and so had access to insurance agents. So they thought, you know, again, it was possible to get it, it just was going to, the issue of what the cost would be was still up in the air a bit.
Okay. Now, the next question probably comes back to one of you folks. The transfer of development rights, are you suggesting we only transfer the housing development rights or transfer the potential, what would have been the maximum potential development of that property, which could potentially be the transfer of some of the commercial development rights as well?
Let's see. I guess in the report, we contemplated transferring residential development rights. That's not to say that the town couldn't consider transferring commercial development rights, but because of the proposal being residential, that's really what we focused in on. Because I think initially, we looked at ways to offset the, the cost of the 30-unit proposed development, and you could transfer additional, you know, up to 66, since you have the potential for up to 66 units there, you could have an additional 36 units of residential development that could be transferred. Or if you wanted to move more than that off the site, you could move all 66.
Okay. Follow-up question now as well. And the development cost, are you factoring in what the town has already paid for the property, or is that just the development cost of the current project?
We, that figure that I had up on the screen did not include the town's $2 million acquisition cost. If you add that, then it would be about another $65,000 per unit, up to a $420,000 per unit cost. We didn't include that, partly because the costs were being compiled in a way that they'd be presented to DHCD for funding, and you wouldn't include an acquisition cost in a presentation like that.
Okay. And the comparable units that you priced out roughly in the $300,000 range, did that include land, land acquisition cost?
Some of them, right? I apologize to any answering unit.
Six of the eight projects Kevin had were similar to this, and that was either town-owned sites or town-owned sites that have been transferred to the housing authority. So they've had zero acquisition cost. Two of the eight were privately purchased and had, you know, the $30 to $60, 30, up to $30,000 per unit of acquisition cost. But six of the eight were basically zero.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much.
A follow-up question to Kevin's on the 66 units. I just want to be very clear, just so there's no one thinking that we're thinking about putting 66 units in there. The plan is going to be, if we've all through this, a 30-unit plan, and the 66 number is only for the transfer of rights, developmental rights issue.
Correct. And it was also, yes, part of the analysis too was to, was to look at the, the zoning. And currently, it appears that the project could be permitted under local zoning without the need for going through the 40B process.
By zoning for 66, but not by something that we have agreed, and the CBC was very clear.
Correct, correct, right.
Sorry about this. Follow-up to Sluckman-Jones's question, Paul. There was also some recommendations regarding project size and economic viability, and I think there was a suggestion for something in a little bit of a higher range in order to be economically viable. Can you talk a little bit about that? But I just want to be careful that we, we don't get too focused on, on 30. I think you recommended being a little bit more flexible on that.
Yeah, it wasn't big.
It wasn't big, no. Part of, one of the suggestions, I, in my section of the report, was to look at keeping the 70-bedroom maximum, but to allow respondents to propose somewhere between 28 to 30, 35 would be the actual maximum number of units, but it would still stay within the 70-bedroom limit that you had set, just in terms of providing a little bit of flexibility for developers.
You have more, Doug? Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. So I have another question about the development cost, which was, I saw the recommendations about the fill, the proposed adding fill, which may or may not be even able to be done on the site, but if the fill weren't brought in, we'd have to elevate the structures. Is that additional work figured into the cost estimate, or were you working from plans before that came up?
If you elevated the, the structures, I think the cost would be, I don't think there'd be a significant difference in, in the cost, Douglas, on, on that. In terms of thinking of elevating, as Sarah mentioned, it just would, you'd lose the, you know, accessibility goals that it set out in the initial sort of draft RFP, because it'd be tough, or you'd have to do elevators kind of thing to, to meet accessibility goals, which would be an added cost. But basically, in the analysis I did, I was assuming that you basically would just get it to one foot above flood level. Right. Now, increase the, the, the average size of the units to accommodate the utility, you know, the, the heating systems that you'd need to have in the units as opposed to typically be in the basements.
Right. And there was some controversy in a previous attempt to develop this property, and the neighbors had a lawsuit, and I don't know for sure, but I heard that the decision included that there'd be no fill brought into the site, so that might be, have to be looked into. Then another question I have was, the accessibility across Springbars Road is a pretty dangerous intersection there with a bad line of sight. And there was a suggestion that an extended sidewalk be constructed and the side, and a crosswalk be placed a little further down the road. Is that part of the, the cost analysis as well?
Yeah, the cost estimate, I'll take your second part first. The, the cost estimate for the sidewalk and the reconstructed, and the crosswalk, sorry, those were not significant numbers, really, but I believe that those were added into Paul's analysis, but it was on the order of $25,000, so not a huge number when you're looking at a project of this size. But your first question about the fill, we did not look into any legal decisions on the project or that might affect the project. What we did consider is that if there were any fill brought into the area, that you would likely have to remove or provide sort of holes in the, in the, on the site that would accommodate an equivalent amount of floodwaters so that there wouldn't be any net change in the amount of, or in the ability of that site to actually accommodate floodwaters.
Okay. I had one more question about the economic viability, and I wonder, in the end, how do you analyze what is the actual cost to the town? We know we have the $2 million investment, but what other costs may be incurred that we might not understand?
Maybe I'll start, and then I'll let Paul finish off. I think we didn't do the type of analysis where we would estimate the town services that would be provided to the project. You know, we didn't look at police and fire and school costs and things like that. That was not part of our planned scope of work. But certainly, that's, that's a valid question to ask, and I think that's something that the town needs to consider in, in your decision-making on the project.
I was actually thinking more in terms of the project itself, other costs to the town that may come up, like if the fill is included or not included, do we have to develop the site before we put out the RFP? Are there other costs that are somewhat hidden?
Okay. Well, we did include the cost of fill, the potential cost of fill on the site. There were several projects that were among the eight that Paul considered that actually had very challenging sites that required fill or sort of unique designs to get around them. So that, that sort of higher cost of design and development is factored into the analysis.
If I could just follow up, the, really, the, the, the upfront cost to the town would really be in running the, the sewer to the site, because that's something that you won't be able to include as a project cost. But fundamentally, you'd be looking to, again, find a developer who would develop the site, and that developer would be responsible for all of those. And that developer would be responsible for all of those costs, for, you know, getting it permitted, getting the funding, building it, and managing it. So really, the cost to the town, if you're going to do this, is really is finding the funds to extend the sewer line to the site.
Oh, I mistakenly thought that was the developer's responsibility as well.
No, because the water line would be, because basically, from where the water line is to the site, it doesn't pass any other properties. To extend the sewer, you'd be passing other properties, so that wouldn't be a cost that you could solely attribute to the project. So DHCD and other public funders would basically not consider that an eligible project cost.
Okay, good. Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Doug, when I was pulling things out of the report, it also looked like the town would be responsible for repaving the road and additional forty-three thousand after the sewer line was put down. And that there would be a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars in sidewalk improvements that the town would have to bear as well. Because that's the brainer that you're going to have to have decent sidewalks there. And then, the other thing that I wondered is, when you're talking about cost to the town, is there's going to have to be an extensive RFP put together for this. And that will take, I know CPC time, but it will also take staff time, putting that together, the review of the applicants. And there is the recommended meeting, which I assume would also take staff time with the DHCD to find out whether this is even a viable product to proceed with, because DHCD is going to have a lot to say about that. So these are additional costs, and compared to the two million, obviously, they're not huge. But they're additional and could be considered hidden.
Right. Thank you.
Do you have other questions, Doug?
No, I'm good for now.
Okay, Jim.
Well, I think we've progressed, a lot of my comments from last time I brought in. I think that addressing the flood zone is really important, I think we've done that. HUD's policy is to not invest in areas in the floodplain, and they want to direct to, only in cases, if I understand it correctly, where there's no other alternative, which is great, I mean, for towns like P-Town and very near areas. But we have other sites in this town where we could transfer the development rights and not have anything to do with the floodplain and avoid this whole issue. And I think that's important to consider. The neighbor concerns have been addressed, you did address accessibility. You talked briefly about the Vernal Pool and other wetlands. But I think from reading your report, you're saying we have to not even go along with your own guidelines or our own conservation and waive some of those in order to get with the setbacks for some of the wetlands there, as I saw mentioned in your report. We didn't talk much about smart growth or hazard mitigation, which is something that in the planning board that's been pushed on us quite a bit to consider in the future of our town and trying to address it. And I think that's really where, I think the rubber meets the road on this one. And the other thing is, since each permit we consider, or each development sets a precedent, it's crucial, critical for Falmouth to consider the cumulative effects of everything we do. We're going to be setting a precedent here to talk about development in our town in the future. And we're going to say it's okay to develop a wetland, to come in, raise the buildings up, and put in fill, and find all the ways that you can get through the development, instead of what I think we should really look for another site. We've got to consider that the, even though one project may seem insignificant, but collectively, the damage we could do if we continue down the road, I think, is a big problem. As community leaders, we not only have the legal right to consider the cumulative effects of our permitting decisions, but we have a legal responsibility. And I think with, if I'm reading correctly, from not only the information that you've provided us, but also about other flood mitigation programs we should have, I think the idea of using this parcel for flood mitigation and continuing all the way up to East Falmouth is a wonderful recommendation. And I think developing a transfer of development rights bylaw, which we're going to have to take to town meeting, get approved, it's going to be a big process. But I really think that's where we should go with this and take the whole sixty-six units and find an identifiable unit that's well out of the wetlands, only a half a mile away, still close to public transportation, has all the other things we need in our vision, and do the development there, and use this parcel for a park and mitigation for a potential flood. And that's always been my opinion, but it's my thoughts.
Well, first of all, it's, this is a great report. It coincides a lot with the Low Comprehensive Plans Subcommittee. We've been going down the same path, and we've reached a lot of the same conclusions that were reached in this report. I especially like the section where you looked at the broader area, because that's something that we're looking fifty years down the road. And yes, there are large plazas and commercial areas that will be redeveloped within the next fifty years. And that's what we're looking at. And as Jim just mentioned, the wetlands restoration and flood mitigation, nitrogen mitigation, plus the greenway all the way up to the new park and T-Ticket, I think those are all pieces that are all fit together now. And I think should lead us to that conclusion, that this is not the best use of this property, and that the transfer of development rights is the way to go, because we do have other parcels in town that we could use them on.
Paul.
I also want to compliment you on the report. I thought it was very well done. I particularly liked the financial analysis. There's a lot of detail in that you don't normally see in a development report. So I think it was a very, very good report. Back in April, I raised three issues, very briefly, the flooding, the timing of the searing, and the unit costs. Those issues are still out there. One of the things that you mentioned is the meeting with DHCD to determine the flood requirements. That clearly is key, because as you point out, if you raise the area, you have to provide space for flooding on-site, so it doesn't transfer the flood elsewhere. I think it's a critical area, and the cost associated with that, insurance requirements that Mr. Murphy mentioned, I think is very, very critical on developing this project. Secondly, your report itself says that, "Do not issue an RFP until the town has, quote, 'a clear plan in place for sewer funding.'" This has to go to town meeting for the funding for that area. And you also indicate it's going to be 2017 before that project gets moving. Now, you don't have to wait till that period of time, but I think that's a critical area in timing for the project. And the third area is unit cost, they've gone up a little bit, but that's up to the developer itself if you want to do that. There is a requirement or mention to meet with DHCD on the sewer extension funding, whether that's available for the site or not. That's a big question in my mind, that's four-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars. And there's also an issue about whether this funding from Mass Works has a feasible source of funding. I think those things have to be determined a little bit, because that'll clearly affect the financial feasibility of the project. I'm a little concerned about the comments that a long-term lease versus a transfer of ownership. I think that has to be decided before an RFP comes out. Are you going to transfer the ownership to a developer, or are you just going to have a lease arrangement? And that's a key element that needs to be addressed as well. So I think there's a number of issues that need to be addressed before we issue an RFP. And if the intent is to gauge the community interest in affordable housing, perhaps you may want to consider something like an expression of interest or a pre-qualification to see who's out there and find out what really, what entities are really interested in this development before we go much further along. But there's a lot of things that need to be addressed, you clearly point out in the report. And again, I think it's a wonderful report, but I think some of these issues need to be addressed fairly soon. Thank you.
Yes, it is a great report. Just, as a reminder, how far back we've gone to get this process started, Community Preservation Committee made a commitment to attempt to provide affordable housing for the town and also open space when they proposed and subsequently recommended to town meeting that the funding be made available to purchase this property. This property was a real disaster, and still is pretty much of a disaster. But the Community Preservation Committee has gone ahead with having a study done on the open space portion to at least move that portion of it forward. And Horstley and Witten did a nice, nice study for us. And we're moving forward with the Conservation Commission and the 300 Committee in partnership to make that portion very nice. What happens to the other portion is what we're talking, really talking about here. It was the intent of the Community Preservation Committee to foster affordable housing, or what is referred to as community housing in the Community Preservation Act. And it was, it was a, because it's one of the three major categories that the Community Preservation Committee recommends money to town hall, I mean, to town meeting for. And the Community Preservation Committee did a, had a study done on the needs and the, of affordable housing in the town several years ago. And the Affordable Housing Committee that reports to the Selectmen came to the Community Preservation Committee and asked us to recommend to town meeting money to do a more updated study based on the more current census. And that hasn't moved forward, unfortunately, as we had hoped, and as the town has hoped, because the organization that bid on that, on that study didn't fulfill it. And it's now gone back out to an RFP. And so that will help answer some of the questions about whether or not the town really does still need affordable housing. So the, the new FEMA maps have certainly made a major impact in this proposal. There's no doubt about it. And how that goes forward is the major question, as I see it. The other major question is the searing. Four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to do it before the town does it in 2017 is a major piece of, a chunk of cash, or whatever, however you want to talk about it. So if you want to delay the project until you've got a commitment from the town to sewer that area and not add that four-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars to the development costs, that's a major, if I have that right, that's a major concern. And of course, as you, as you delay the development of anything, your costs are going up. However, the report emphasizes the fact that interest rates are very low right now, and they may continue to be that way for some time, but whether or not they'll remain there until 2017 is, no one could say. I think this report will really help the town, the Community Preservation Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and the Planning Board to make the right decisions here. And it's not going to be easy. The buck definitely stops right in this room. And with the exception of the fact that the Community Preservation Committee, I happen to be the Planning Board representative to the Community Preservation Committee, but part of that buck is going to sit on the Community Preservation Committee's desk also. So I'm hoping that we don't just think about this report. I'm hoping that the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board and the Community Preservation Committee can get together and make the decisions that need to be made, whether we go ahead and develop this area, whether we use, transfer development rights, whether we increase the number of units and raise the buildings here, whether we wait till 2017. We don't want to wait until 2017, certainly, to make the decisions about this, about this property and this project. So I just encourage everybody to keep it on the front burner, not the back burner, and don't be afraid to make the tough, tough decisions. Thank you.
I want to thank you for adding in all of the area-wide planning suggestions. That is something that the Planning Board really wanted, and I thank you very much for that. I personally think we ought to go definitely towards the TDR for the many problems that are showing themselves on this site. And I don't care whether we go for the thirty units or we go for the full sixty-six. That's going to be determined by the housing needs, I think, here. But there's another basic reason that I think we ought to go for the TDR. We've got too many problems, including the fact that the FEMA maps are backwards-looking. What the current FEMA maps have are, I don't know what they were based on, a year, two years ago. We are constantly getting increasing water heights, which means that that is going to be more and more in the flood zone, deeper and deeper. So when your report recommended one foot above fill to one foot above the flood zone, well, all bets are off the table, depending upon what happens with increased water levels. So that in itself would say, uh-oh, bad decision to develop in here. Did the costs, the per-unit costs, include the five-hundred-thousand cost for on-site treatment? And was there really any consider, this is a two-part question. Was there really any consideration of on-site treatment? Because if you're only filling to be able to build the homes there, where are you putting the on-site treatment? You're going to have to fill to make a treatment site, too, I think.
Yeah, we really put aside the idea of on-site treatment, because given the town's townwide plan to provide sewer in the Little Pond watershed, it really didn't make financial sense to install any kind of on-site treatment facility when only a certain number of years down the line, they would be required to hook up to sewer. So we really, so the cost that was, that was factored in was the cost of searing.
Okay. So we're really, if this development, go ahead, we're really looking at 2017, if town meeting approves moving ahead with that sewer?
Well, I said, I think a lot of people have said that that makes a lot of sense. But the four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar price tag was actually the cost of searing prior to 2017. So if you waited till 2017, that price would almost go away. It would be much smaller, just the connection cost, essentially.
I, no, I understand that. But what I'm saying is that you really aren't going to be able to complete that development until at least 2017, depending upon the progress of the town sewer. And I have another question there, because in the preliminary report, the town sewer was thought to be seven-hundred-and-forty-thousand, and now it's four-hundred-and-forty. Is that simply because the town has gotten more accurate in its estimates?
Okay, I'm going to let Paul answer that.
Okay.
No, when I came up with the six-hundred-and-sixty, Patricia was, I think I had factored in the, like, a fifty percent soft cost kind of thing. And further, after I wrote that, I talked with Scott Bisho, and said, no, the four-forty really was the construction. He had already included the sort of permitting and design factors in that. So it was more just a sharper look at what we had put down in the draft report.
The fudge factor was put in twice. Okay. The other thing I have is, if we're going to have to do that amount of fill, and I'm not a hydrologist, so I don't even know where to think about this. But it would appear to me, if we are going to have to do that amount of fill, and we are going to have to dig basins, and I think what the water table there is what, maybe one or two feet below the surface of the ground in here, the whole thing is an unreal scenario to me. But my question here is, are we going to, in any way, shape, or form, change the whole hydrology of the area by adding so much fill, by creating basins? And is, if, in order not to change the hydrology, if it's possible not to do that, if it would happen, lots of ifs, is there going to have to be exceptionally carefully, careful planning as to where to put this fill and where to create the basins?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point. And I think in our natural resource section, we try to address that. And I think in our natural resource section, we try to address that it's, we do not, we did not get into the actual engineering of the site. I think when we calculated the amount of fill that would be required, that was just a way of sort of answering the fact that the flood zone maps had changed so dramatically from our draft report to our final report. And it really didn't seem like there was another set of scenarios that we could propose that would make any sense, any more sense with the flood zone. So I think in proposing the, or in explaining the amount of fill that would be required for those four different development scenarios, we weren't trying to recommend that the town follow them. It was just a way of sort of illustrating how much sort of careful engineering would need to be done for each of those different development scenarios. Some required a lot more fill than others.
And without the fill, this project would not be feasible. Is that correct because of the flood zone?
Well, the, the only non-fill option would be to actually design the buildings so that the living floors are raised above base flood elevation, one foot above base flood elevation. And that's not prohibited, but I wouldn't say that it's recommended.
Okay. Okay, that's my questioning. Yep, that's what I was going to do is recycle. I'm sure there are questions, Doug.
I have two more call-ups and I think applying more for the Planning Board because you probably can ask these questions now. First of all, if we do not develop this, it was funded with the idea of affordable housing through the CPC. I imagine CPC is going to say someone has to, or the town has to fund the purchase of the land if it was not used for affordable housing. Maybe Al can answer that one. I don't know what the stipulation is if we purchase it with a requirement of being 10% each year for affordable housing and we're not fulfilling that agreement.
Good question. I would think that if the transfer of development rights created more affordable housing, that it wouldn't be an issue. But that's going to be my, that's my, my uneducated guess.
I don't understand how we can transfer development rights on a property that our Planning Board says is not development, is can't be development. How can there be development rights on a piece of property that our own Planning Board says, we don't recommend developing it? How, I just don't understand how that can be a development right.
Because zoning allows that to happen on that property. We're saying, no.
It should not, not that it cannot.
We should not. It can, but you should not.
It should not, is what we're saying.
That feels a little...
You can, you heard Sarah. You can fill, you can put them on stilts. You can develop.
You can do anything if you have enough money.
Mm-hmm. And if you don't mind putting a segment of the population of Falmouth in a situation of living in a stilt affordable housing development, or one on fill. So it's not that it can't be developed. If we were looking at as a Planning Board, we'd say, oh, who are you trying to kid? I think. But Jim, you had, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I, I, we're, we've already spent a tremendous amount of money and a tremendous amount of time. And I think if you hear, and in order to solve not, even, even if we were going to approve this problem, this issue, transfer of development rights is in the original plan to begin with. And the solution is also transfer of development rights. I really think we should forget about developing this property and work really hard on a new bylaw that allows transfer of development rights, which is something that we're taking a look at as the, how we're going to grow this town in the future and how we're going to look and where we can do this. And if we were to have a bylaw that allowed us to do that, to bank these development rights, and then when we find, or we actually own, which we do, other properties, that we wanted to put increased density on that, that we could transfer to that, we don't have to spend all kinds of money, engineering, fighting against, you know, the banks and other investors, problems with flood planes or other rules. I think we should just set this aside and put all our efforts into the transfer of development rights on this site. We have to get a whole new bylaw. It's going to go to Town Meeting. It's going to take a lot of work. And then that becomes the solution, not only for this, but a lot of other parcels, too. And that's really, we should be, put our energy in. Instead of trying to develop in a high-risk flood zone, it just does, to me, doesn't make any sense to spend the next four years trying to work out all the problems with that instead of just saying, okay, let's, let's put our, our efforts into the, the TDRs, get the bylaw passed, and start identifying parcels where we can develop with greater density that not in the flood plain, that are on public transportation, that have the potential, that are eventually going to bring in the sewer, and neighborhoods where they want it.
Kevin, you had something?
I, I do, and it, this is a couple of questions, and I think we all deserve, incidentally, I think this is a great meeting tonight because we're really airing out some questions and some points that we've all thought about, but the Commissioner's brought it to, you know, the forefront. Number one is, I don't know if we've addressed, but we surely need to look at, the transfer of the development rights in this particular location are more valuable because there's flow already allocated on the sewer-ing system in this location, unlike development rights if you were to transfer them to another area of town. Our DEP permit at the, to a treatment facility has been set aside for this facility because we knew this was going to be a potential affordable housing site. So not only do we have transfer of development rights on the table, but we have development rights that add flow to our system that can be put somewhere else on the town sewer, or potentially if we work with the, the state, somewhere adjacent to our town sewer. So in other words, we could go to the DEP and say, we're going to transfer, so not only development rights, but we'd like to transfer this flow that we already knew existed. I think that that could be a home run because we may find an adjacent property to the town sewer that is not in the map to be increased in the format of, you know, of our flow at the West Falmouth Treatment Facility, but we have this ability to transfer that. So that's number one. I think that's a question that we need staff to work on because that would be a home run for everybody. And number two, we need to go to the, you know, ask, charge the Town Manager's Office and the Planning Office to, to go to, you know, DHCD and talk to them about that. So we, you know, and you hit it right, Jim. We'll spend another three years going down a road that, you know, we're going to get a stop sign at the end. So let's find out right up front whether we can do a couple of things, number one, or not do a couple of things. But I just wanted to bring the flow into the mix here as well.
That's a very valuable comment, Kevin. Thank you for that. Do any other board members have any further comments or questions?
In order to make this a viable project, it says that we'd have to invoke the low-income housing tax credit. What income level is that? Are we targeting one income level in order to use that tax credit?
It's an average, right? Paul, do you want to take that one? Sorry. I'll let the expert answer.
It'd be 60% of area median income for the, for the tax credit units. So you're, oh, gosh. For a single-person household, it's probably $36,000, $38,000 a year. But yes, it would be targeted to that income range or below. As I noted, there's some room in the, the way the formula works out, so you could probably do 10% to 20% of the units potentially for higher income if you so choose.
Okay, thank you.
Doug?
That's another negative, in my view, because you don't want to have all the people at the lower end of the income scale in the same area. We like to have a little more diverse community, I think. And another thing about this site, if I could bring up another point, was as far as the natural environment there with the vernal pool, I know we have a 100-foot buffer, but I see that you're recommending the real ideal situation would be more like 350 and that these creatures like to travel 800 feet. So it's a great site for restoration, and I think that might be overlooked as well.
Pat?
Well, my comments are sort of follow-ons. Would I just say that there's a great deal in, in here that the Commission looked at in terms of all the adjacent parcels and walkways and roads and sidewalks and, and other businesses as well, in terms of how that area, those neighborhoods could be improved upon in some way. And I think it's important to still keep that in, in the book, in, in the forefront, that we don't lose that because I think they were very good suggestions that were made for that.
Yeah, this is why I really appreciated their greater look at that whole area in there. And it will be invaluable to the town to follow their recommendations through on that, I think. Will make it a much more livable, pleasant town to be in, I think. So, any, anybody else here? Because Doug?
Perhaps we should invite them on more projects.
I think so. I'm going to go to the public now. Annie. Please, anybody who wants to ask a question, please come up here so that people in our television land can hear and know who you are.
Hi, Annie Seganek, Falmouth House and Trust. Paul, I wonder if you could talk more about the comparable projects and if those were in, maybe you mentioned this, but I didn't, I didn't remember it, similar environmental constraints, if they had constraints, and if they were in other towns. I think some folks in the Planning Board mentioned that tax credits, you know, that HUD as a rule says, don't build in a flood zone unless, that's, you know, like if you're in P-town and that's all you've got. So were the projects that you looked at, did those include flood zoning areas?
No, none of the other projects that, of the eight projects were located in a flood zone. And I can't recall, I've been at the Commission 12 years, and I don't believe any of the developments that we funded through the Home Consortium have been in flood zone. There have been a number that were definitely topographically challenging sites, but none specifically in a, in a flood zone. And if I could, just in terms of Douglas's comment about the diversity, I mean, all of the, the projects that I listed comparably and everything that we've seen over the last three or four years, the, you know, the demand has been significant. I was just at a ground, a dedication, actually, in Barnstable last Monday where there were 251 applications for, for 12 units. So there's still substantial need for affordable housing, especially rental housing in Falmouth, everywhere on the Cape. And secondly, I think the, the research that I've seen, the key is not so much the income diversity, diversity within a particular development, it's whether the particular development is located within a really low-poverty neighborhood. So if you can, in which, you know, this wouldn't be the case at all. So to the extent that you can move folks into non-low-poverty neighborhoods, their both education and health outcomes seem to, to improve. So it's not so much the necessarily diversity of incomes within a development is where it's located.
Yeah, go ahead.
Don't, oops, don't it down. And so my, my follow-up question is, how, then how likely do you think HUD or, you know, through DHCD would be to grant tax, a tax credit, or, you know, tax credit status to a project like ours in a flood zone? I mean, is it a pie in the sky or, or is it, or you don't know, maybe?
No, that's, I, I don't know, Annie, I really, and that's why the suggestion is to go up and meet with Kate Racer at DHCD. And Kate's very honest and straightforward, so she doesn't pull any punches. So, I mean, you go up and say, we're thinking about doing this, and what do you think? And she'll give you a very clear and direct assessment of what the prospects are for, for getting the project funded in, in this area. I mean, any tax, almost, there's only one I've ever seen in my career that's got funded on the first round typically takes, because there, there are a number of high-quality projects that are just, have to wait in line two or three times before they get funded. I think there were 24 projects that got funded in the last round, and there were over 50 projects that applied. And Kate said all of them were good, solid projects, ready to go, they just didn't have the resources to fund them all.
Thanks. George?
George Hampson, Precinct Five. I have an important question, and that is, do we know how much the sea level has increased in the Falmouth area? I know that isn't consistent from one location to the other. And also is, where are we going to be going in the, let's say, 25 to 50 years from now with the increase in water tables? Does the Commission have any ideas about that?
I can tell you that the revised firm maps do not account for sea level rise. They're simply better, better analysis of existing topography on the properties. So there's a real need to also account for sea level rise, which is one reason why the Commission always recommends now that if you are going to be building anywhere in a flood zone, that you elevate to one foot above base flood elevation in an effort to address that issue somewhat. But I think the fact is that over time, there'll be more detailed information about sea level rise. We do have someone on staff, Ryan Bennett, who was not involved in this project, but, but has done a lot of work with towns on coastal issues and sea level rise issues. And we might be able to get more information on that for you in the future.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who has? Patty?
Patty Haney, Community Preservation Committee. Listening to all this is a little depressing, but the thing that gets me the most is that this beautiful piece of land that was bought several years ago and voted on by Town Meeting was to fit in and enhance the T-ticket area. We worked with the neighbors, we looked at the area, and it was agreed to keep it small. And when I hear this talk about, let's jam 66, you know, units into someplace within a half a mile of there, I feel personally bad for the community that we kind of sold one thing, and now people are talking about something completely different. I, I just don't know what that says about the character of our town. We're talking about young people, families. We want them to have yards to play in, conservation area to run around in, and not some big development. I don't think that's what this town is about, or it shouldn't be. So that's a real concern to me. And the transfer of development rights, I, we should check with the law, but I don't know that you can transfer commercial rights when there weren't any there to start with because CPC money can't buy those things. So that's another thing to look into. I mean, I think it's not a bad idea, but I don't think you can use those rights for So I'm just saying that I would be very disappointed if this was looked at as, how much money can we make? And how many people of low income can we put in one place? When you're talking about diversity, $36,000 to $38,000 for a single person, most single people in this town under the age of 35 or so don't make that. That's more than they make. So you know, you're thinking about all these poor people, they're not. These are the young people we're trying to keep on the Cape that are going to have families and drive the economy. That's all I have.
Patty, I think I'd like to comment on this, that there was, I hadn't even thought about transferring 66 units to another place and squeezing it in. It was transferring the potential 30 units here to another place that wasn't in a flood plain. And legitimately, 66 could be built under current zoning, but if we were to create a, an affordable housing bank based upon transfer of development rights for what's possible here, I don't think any one of us was thinking about wholesale, just lifting this whole thing up and plopping 66 anyplace. That would not be anything we would want to do either. I totally agree with you. So I just had to say that. Nancy?
I'm very glad that Patty stood up and made that comment because I am totally opposed to this, even the possibility of an idea that if there's some transfer of development rights in this, that it should be 66 units. I just wanted to speak outside the housing community on that. Thank you.
Yeah, I think you...
Yeah, I think you saw, perhaps, Nancy, the nods of other people here on the planning board, that this is not something that we would like to see done. Kevin is saying, "No." So that's not in the thought process. Yes.
My thought of that is you could transfer development right for one unit, two units, to spread those out over the community. We're trying to redevelop East Main Street. It could be a way to enhance that development.
Correct.
So that's really where, at least where I was coming from.
That's what I understood, too, and this is the way our board is looking at it as well. Does anybody in the public, are there any further comments? Okay, Jim?
Well, I think we should consider ourselves lucky that all this information was brought forward now during the planning process and not after we already started getting into it. I think we've addressed a lot of really serious issues and it's forward-thinking. I think if we take into consideration, you know, in planning, if you take no adverse effect, we're really looking for ways to cause no harm in our planning for the future. And I think that's what this does. I would guess I was too simplistic when I just talked about a simple transfer of development rights, but really, I thought we could bank them, set them aside, and apply them one or two at a time where necessary, instead of spending the time trying to develop this difficult site. And that's what I meant. I was too simplistic in my presentation, but I didn't mean to move them all at one time and make a massive development.
Doug?
I guess one thing I wouldn't want to comment on, as having been to some CPC meetings, I think it is good if we're getting this information now. It's too bad we didn't get it early, just because I know how much time and effort the CPC put into developing this plan, coming up with extensive years and years of work in doing this. And I'm sad that it doesn't sound like it's going to go forward with the amount of effort they put into it. And I do still appreciate the amount of time and effort the CPC put into it, if we're not going to be.
Kevin?
I'm not ready to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I'd really like to be able to have the discussion with the DHCD, as well as look into the opportunity with the DEP whether we could transfer both the flow and the development rights to, on the Sore, Town Sore.
Okay. So that brings up the question as to how the two boards want to proceed. It sounds like we have really made some progress in directions tonight. And it sounds also to me like the next steps would be with the DHCD, seeing about transfer of development rights, how much is possible. Am I correct in what I'm hearing from everybody?
I think also we should refer to any potential court decisions that may limit Phil on the site, because I have heard talk of that. I'd like to know the real answer to that.
Okay, that needs to be brought into the equation as well. If there are court decisions about bringing Phil onto the site, and that should be put into the equation as to what can happen or not. What?
You don't have to make it with your permission.
Go ahead.
You may want to just take some time to digest this.
Yeah, Brian, you can't be heard back there.
Never done this, right?
You know, take your time, digest what you've heard tonight. You don't have to make a decision tonight. We can come up with some recommendations as for next steps for you, and we can go from there. So don't, my advice to the board is don't rush it. And you may want to take it back as individual boards and meet again, and take it one step at a time.
Yeah.
Don't need to vote something.
We're not voting anything tonight. I'm sorry if I gave that impression. No, it was just that, that we seem to have converged on a few steps that should be taken to find out what the real possibilities are. Pat?
I'm not speaking for anyone else, but we have not been engaged in this TDR at all, at least to my knowledge. And I know a little bit about it, but very little about it. And I would imagine that most of us don't know a great deal about it. And I would think it would be very helpful if our next joint meeting, which could be held fairly soon, is some sort of a presentation on TDRs, what they are, what they mean, how they can be used, how they can benefit the community. And we could keep in mind this parcel and apply some of whatever principles we're learning to this particular parcel, because we have something to work with. So I would suggest that we do that before we even think about going any further and making a decision, is at least knowing what it means so that we can make a meaningful decision.
Yeah, we, our bylaw wouldn't work under this circumstance, and I think this is what our board understands, but I suspect that there is a lot more variability in what can be done under TDRs, and we could use a tutorial here. Yes, you can.
We can do that for you, in fact. No problem.
Okay. If it's just a segment of one of your meetings, that I don't know how long a tutorial would take, you know, if you could set that aside, or how this would take place, but this is also one of the preliminary steps towards making a decision, I think. You're right on that. So the...
Excuse me?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Right, before you move on to another portion of the meeting, Mr. Jones is correct. The CPC has spent an enormous amount of time and energy on this project. In fact, the CPC was the, it was the only project that the CPC has ever initiated on its own. We've always entertained proposals from organizations outside of the CPC. So I think, I would just make, I think we need to make sure that as we go forward with whatever we do, that the CPC continues to be involved. And we have a, we have a housing subcommittee on the CPC. So if, for instance, we go to DHCD, I think the CPC needs to be represented in something like that, and any other discussions amongst the planning board and the board of selectmen. I think that as far as this particular project is concerned, the CPC needs to be present.
I would tend to agree with you, Ralph, because you've been the one that brought this whole project forward, the CPC. So definitely, I think that needs to be part of it.
Well, I was just going to add, and not only brought it forward, but actually was very instrumental in the whole process of saving Little Pond.
Yes.
Which goes back even further.
Yes.
So this has a long history, and they actually stepped in and helped make it something very viable.
And I would also add to that, that whether or not the housing is built here, saving that parcel goes a long way towards saving Little Pond and that whole flood plain area in there, and allowing the development of green space where there should be green space, I think, as a flood basin, flood control, parkland for the enjoyment of the town. I know a lot of people were looking forward to being able to kayak in that area, get their kayaks out there. I think it would be a very active, an actively-used parcel, even without the development. So I don't look at it as being a waste, for sure. It's extremely valuable. Now, the other question that I would want to bring up, because we have certain members of the public here tonight who have commented, but we also have, one hopes, a fairly good television audience. Would you want to entertain comments based upon what they've heard tonight to add into our deliberations and questions? Is that something that you would like to open up for possible...
Are you talking about through correspondence?
Through correspondence, not, yeah. Written comments. Is that something you would like to open up?
I think you just did.
Well, you know, we could say, "No, we'll just go ahead and make the decision based upon the comments that we've had tonight in our own discussion." Or we could say, "Yeah, we'd like to hear a little bit more input here from the public."
I think we all need more information, more input, and more digestion of the information we have.
Okay.
I don't think anyone, as Brian said, should be quick to make any judgments this evening as we move forward. There's still other pieces to the puzzle, so we surely hope to hear from the public as that goes forward.
And hearing is one thing, but where should it be directed to? The selectmen's office, the planning office?
I think it'd be wonderful for both, to copy to both, and to the planning board.
Okay. So the public out there has its instructions if they wish to comment further on our discussion tonight, any questions or ideas that they have. Okay? Yes, Paul?
Is the report going to be on the town website, so people in the audience can access that?
I have no idea.
I believe that it is.
Is it on the website? If not, will it be put on the website?
Yes.
Okay, so the public can't access.
It'd be very helpful, it's a very good report.
It's excellent.
Very helpful for the public to look at it and refer to it.
Okay, now, before we move on to our agenda, I truly, truly want to thank the commission's staff for their tremendous effort that they put into this, their response to our original comments, and this is just an invaluable report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're moving on now to the Selectmen's Five-Year Strategic Plan. Yes.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes.
There is a group of experts who are not here tonight, and those are our coastal resource experts. Well, actually, there is one here tonight, George Hampson. But I think in terms of what we're thinking about in the future, because of our coastal areas that either are not built upon, some already have commercial businesses on them, we certainly have a number of residences in coastal areas that we might want to consider how they've done as part of this whole discussion, too, because I think they can offer a great deal in terms of the planning, and particularly the TDRs.
Yeah, I don't want to cut anybody else who can add to it.
I know that, it's just that as we go forward, different mindsets might be valuable as the discussion moves forward.
So as we move forward, we should locate, identify the individuals or groups who can add to this discussion. Okay. Okay, so the Five-Year Strategic Plan, this is to be a discussion of the plan, and since this is your plan, I think you should lead off with this, and I suspect that there are, I know I have a number of questions, but I suspect that there are a number of questions from other board members here as well. Who's going to, you going to take that, Doug, and run with it?
Well, I don't want to read the strategic plan, too. You have the plan.
I understand.
And that, you know, you really have nailed down to the four different priorities of, as you can see, the financial stability and community development, coastal resources, beaches, resource conservation management, and the water and wastewater management. Our goal this year, in the past two years on our strategic plan, is to be fairly directed in, turning up the specific items that we're trying to accomplish. And previous plans have been a little vaguer and wide open, and we're saying this year we really try to cut it down to fewer things and things that are identifiable and can be checklisted off. And so certainly we'd love to have some feedback, ideally we'd love to have some support on all the different quarters of our plans, but some responses to what we are trying to accomplish is very useful.
Okay. I certainly don't have any problems in giving you support. I think it's very wise to pare it down in this manner, much as we're doing with the comprehensive plan, so that it becomes usable.
I'm sure there are things on my board that I'd like to add as a example before the discussion.
Well, I would just say that for the first time, we combined financial and economic stability and community development. Those were not all part of one comprehensive goal at all. But it became very clear to us, I know that there's a planning board and there's a zoning board, and we use the term "community development," but there's no real designation, in a sense, about who is really responsible for the community development in the big picture. And so we wanted to include that in the goal, because it does, it affects enormously our economic stability going forward, is how our community is developed, and what our financial resources will be at the same time. So that section has a different thrust to it than it had before. And I know the town manager's office as well is looking more at, in terms of the staff, the coordination, and the direction of community development going forward in a town life.
And we were stuck, we did struggle with the use of community development because of its connotations to land development. And we're not saying, we're really saying, "This does not mean we're going to develop every piece of land."
Thank you.
It's saying, "How does the community grow or not grow, or how can we look at it as a big picture?"
But I think your statement there fully describes that, because you say, "Support business and community development to facilitate a vibrant local economy." So that's a much bigger picture, I think, than that. As you know, we have been working on the comprehensive plan, and Town Meeting has voted in several elements already. But my basis of questioning is, when you were meeting, did you have the elements that have already been voted in front of you to see whether it was in sync with your plans or not? How are you using the comprehensive plan elements that have been voted so far, which insofar as this, there's the energy, there's the economic, and there is the water and wastewater elements. And they all have action items, too, with them. And I'm just curious how you're going to be incorporating the comprehensive plan with what you're doing with your strategic plan, and how we can get feedback here? Because, as I have said many times, we've got a goal or goals that we're hoping are going to live for a long, long time. And we've got policies that, again, they're somewhat generic and vague enough so that they have a long life, but they set a direction. But it's the action items, and that seems to be a lot of what you're dealing with in your strategic plan. It's the action items that make things happen. And so to what extent are you looking at the action items in the strategic plan and giving feedback as to, "No, no, it's off the table, throw it out, put this in?" Because those can be changed without Town Meeting vote.
Well, I think one thing, when you look at that 1.1.5, which is to implement, no, that's not the one, I have the wrong page here. It's 1.2.4, it's on the second page. Yeah, page nine, the bottom one, the last one on the page, where it says, "Enhanced Community Development Approach to Town Planning." And I think the best example of that would be the Little Pond area that the commission did. They not only looked at Little Pond, but they also looked at the whole surrounding area. And I know sometimes, and I don't know enough about the planning board, so I can't, shouldn't even comment on what you do, but I know you look at projects as they come forward. The zoning board looks at, appeals to certain things, so they look at very specific projects or pieces of land, or parcels, or lots, or small development, or what have you. But I think this whole community development idea is to look at the neighborhood. When you look at a project, look at the neighborhood as well as the project itself. And this, and the commission's approach to that in their, in their report, I think, was a very good example of that. I don't know how to do that necessarily, but that's the whole idea, is we, is that we should be looking at our neighborhoods, our villages, and everything we do, and not just take one piece of it at a time.
This is what we're doing under the comprehensive plan, Pat. That's why I'm wondering how, how we can do a feedback loop here. Heather?
Just to further the discussion, maybe conceptually, I can tell you, when the board initially involved themselves in setting an annual strategic plan for several years, what was involved in a very comprehensive and cumbersome and really not particularly productive, although valuable from a planning standpoint, not all that valuable from an implementation standpoint, of having a feedback loop with all departments and setting goals with each of the departments, and having those go back to the board and back up to the selectmen, and that they really only have half a day a year to dedicate to strategic planning. So they really did trim their process back over the last two years, and it's been significantly more productive for the board and for the staff. I can assure you that that's a much more valuable tool to us when we're being asked to carry those out. What we do is ask the owner agents, whether it's the Economic Development, Industrial Corporation, the Energy Committee, the Local Comprehensive Planning Committee, to be the owners and be responsible for those element areas. And I know that in the past, the board always asked those boards about how the work they're doing is fulfilling both the comprehensive plan and the Board of Selectmen's strategic plan. So isn't it as much that the Board of Selectmen... So isn't it as much that the Board of Selectmen is following up on every element of the local comprehensive plan? It is the agencies that they create and promote to carry out the plan that they ask to reflect on those. So that, to me, is the feedback loop, rather than having the board sit, you know, for hours on end in a planning session in a less productive way, to have your foot soldiers reviewing that and getting back to you.
Yeah, that was another.
That's the way that we've approached it.
There was another question that I have there, as to, I didn't expect that you, as a board, was going to do this hands-on, but how is there some assurance that whoever is assigned the responsibility, like the new Economic Development Committee, will take into account a number of situations like this? Kevin?
Well, I just wanted to focus a little bit on what Heather said. The board, and I was on the board in the past, we rather micromanaged how things were supposed to be accomplished. We brought in the Beach Committee to handle this. We brought in, you know, the Building Department, or what have you, whereas we focused our activities back to the broad stroke and challenged in the Town Manager's Office, as well as the Economic Development Committee in this situation, and allow the planning board to do your job. And then, we'll set goals with our Town Manager in his evaluation to see whether or not he's able to accomplish each and every one of these things. We also understood that, over the years, if some things can't be accomplished, we hit some roadblocks, Town Meeting, so that's why we continue to adapt the plan. And we hope that, you know, that the comprehensive plan is, is something that you're tasked with, that it's monumental. I know that we all have input, but we hope that they are bringing it to the table, and they're the ones that remind us, when we're doing this, of that we need to coincide at the same time.
That was my concern, because I didn't know. And so, I'm asking the question, I'm not pointing a finger, I'm just asking for information and questioning.
I think the other thing is that the Town Manager and the Assistant Town Manager both take this document, and they meet with the department heads, and they go through this with them. So as they develop their budgets and they develop their goals for the coming year, that those budgets and those goals should reflect what's in the strategic plan, so that we're all working toward the same end. And I think they can probably speak better to that than I can, because they're more directly involved with working with the department heads.
And I think it's important to note that we've continued to strive to streamline government in this building, and very often, I walk into this building and there's not only department head meetings, but there are development meetings and things of that nature, where we've brought all the same people in the same room, rather than go to this department and then that department. And I think that's important, and as you continue to see, as we're going to revamp this building, the Town Manager's been tasked to be more customer-friendly, so permitting processes and things of that nature will be much more helpful to the public, as well as all of us in our boards and committees.
Yeah, I know. I read the enterprise, and I thought, oh, good, this is in the right direction. Julian?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Yeah, just to echo, obviously, service is the only business we're in, and customer service should be king here, and that's certainly the directive and the marching orders from the board that we're trying to accomplish through consolidation. And it's a daunting task, but a critically important one, to maximize the use of our, you know, our precious resources. But I do want to also underscore that the FY15 budget process, which we are heavily involved in, in fact, as I think the planning boards are aware, certainly the Selectmen are, the, per the charter, the Town Manager's recommended budget is to be transmitted to the board by January 1, and the Selectmen have a very short timeframe within which to review, discuss, put any stamps or adjustments on that, and transmit it to the Finance Committee. But I did want to underscore the comments the board's already made, even though annually the timeframe we're able to devote to the strategic planning process is all too small and rare. The good news is that the board very diligently and seriously takes that task and performs it, and this document is becoming, although my time here has been relatively short, obviously, I think it's becoming increasingly valuable. We transmit it to the respective department heads, we ask them to take it into consideration as they come forward with their respective budget proposals from the different offices, and it's not unusual to be referring to some aspects of the strategic plan in the budget hearings and meetings that I have with the different department heads that were recently completed. So some elements of them more neatly fit into budget, discrete budget packages, others do not, others are more long-term, and represent commitments and strategies and engagements that we think are critical to the community. But as I think has been identified, unlike, for instance, some elements of the much more comprehensive and complex, comprehensive plan, the overall land use plan, this has discrete pieces that we can actively move forward like chess pieces, and don't necessarily have to wait for the development community to step up and for us to enact or engage them to make that happen. So it is, it's an incredibly, in my view, powerful tool that we can actualize through the annual budget process, to the extent we're able. Fine-tune it each year with the board's guidance. And keep in mind, as we do from a staff standpoint, and Brian is critically helpful to us in this regard, you know, the big picture, the overall comprehensive plan, the land use issues, things, for instance, that we discuss regularly, Selectman Murphy talked about, are beginning to meet regularly as a development team, which we have. Heather Harper has very ably chaired that group, and I'm very happy to join them. We get all the critical staff people into a room at least monthly so far, and talk about how we can move these issues forward, how we can work together more efficiently, more productively, and serve the public and, you know, various boards and commissions more effectively. So it's really translating the mission that's reflected here in the important statements into reality. And one item, for instance, that become clear to me in my relatively short time here, is the concept of expanding Main Street. And I know from speaking to Brian and others, and listening to comments from the board, that that has been a goal of this planning board, and a very worthy and noteworthy goal, but you can't obviously make that happen overnight. However, as we have various knocks on the door, having the key staff members recognize that that is one, that is an important element that we keep in mind, it's amazing how little steps can suddenly become additive, and you see linchpins begin to develop, and some exciting possibilities come forward. So I just want to share with you that those are the kinds of things that, by working together, that mindset can be developed and facilitated, and we can work with one another more effectively. So I thought I'd jump on the soapbox for a minute and pass that along.
Glad you did.
Thank you for that.
You know, I've been the one talking here for our planning board so far. Does anybody else have comments or questions in regard to the five-year strategic plan?
I've been enjoying the new financial atmosphere that I've been sensing at Town Meeting, and I think you guys are on the right track, and can't wait to get to the next subject of the beaches.
Paul?
I was going to mention, I thought it was a good summary with priority areas and action step-by-owns. There's probably two dozen, and half of them are in the bailiwick of the Town Manager, so I'm sure he's going to pass that along, but there's a big role for the Selectmen here, which I think is important as well. The only comment I would make, it's only one action item, is that you vote for the planning board, and I think we can help out in other areas as well.
Okay. Have we given you the feedback and asked the questions that you were hoping for from putting this on the agenda tonight?
Absolutely. In response to Paul, we were lyric of telling other people what to do, and so that, Derek Amson, so either we're going to have the Town Manager pass it on to you, but we didn't really want to put people on the list as who's responsible for it when they weren't in the room, even though that's often a common thing, if someone's absent, that's what you decide to drop to. We were afraid people would ask you often, and so, not knowing whether we could do that was one thing that we did actually consider. Show me a slight that if you weren't there.
Not, but I'll tell you, I am.
We'll take that as a green light from now on.
In relationship to your comment on the promote job growth through expanded land for technology park area, my note here is that the EDIC, and Jim is our representative there, but that they should be working with the planning board for the vision as to where expansion should be taking place, to fit with this long-range view of the town. But you guys have to be involved in that too, because we can't make that happen without you.
And I also happen to be the Board of Selectmen's representative in the EDIC. Typically, the original steps are made, i.e. with staff, and then when there's something a little bit firmer, you know, everyone likes to take something and run with it before there is any definitive thoughts or messages, and we need to curtail the message and find out the plan as we move forward. It is no secret that the board, pardon, the EDIC has a memorandum of understanding with the Board of Selectmen for the potential redevelopment of our, the reuse of the cap landfill. The EDIC plans on making a report to the Board of Selectmen. It would probably be good that they make a report as well to the planning board of them hiring a consultant and how they're proceeding down. They've hired Weston and Sampson, and I'm not going to preempt the Chairman of the EDIC who plans on doing that, but when there's something a little bit closer with staff and things like that, I think we all need to be engaged right from the beginning.
Yeah, so that decisions aren't made before anybody knows about it.
There's no decisions, I can tell you that. We talk a lot, but.
Yes, Bob?
What stood out to me was about the strategic priorities was what those priorities were. And what it speaks to is what we think is important here in Falmouth, and what is important is the quality of life here, because all of these priorities speak to the quality of life, our coastal resources and beaches, conservation, wastewater, and how we preserve those up ahead of it, as well as the most important, which is the financial and economic stability. So I think you did a great job prioritizing, picking those priorities for this town.
Absolutely.
And I think it's important to note that not only are they the top four, but they're relatively in order. Without financial stability, the board felt that we couldn't do and accomplish any of the other tasks.
Yeah, we keep running up against that with the comprehensive plan. Wait a minute, you know, you've got to have the money to be able to do your wishes. And that's always where it is. It's, the buck stops right there, literally, so.
Is that what missed our next topic?
Okay, you're going to run with that, Doug. And that is downtown parking meters.
Oh, I thought we were going to talk about the beaches.
Oh, I didn't know, I'm sorry.
I mean, just for a second, if we could.
Okay, sure.
I just have a question about, what is the strategic plan? Is there a beach nourishment policy in place? Has it fallen off, or is that just my imagination? Is there management of that? Heather?
Several years ago, maybe four years ago, the Beach Committee developed a comprehensive beach management plan, which includes strategic beach management at specific locations. So there are goals for beach nourishment in that beach management plan, and one of the, I think, one of the goals in here is to make sure that that plan remains up to date and the permits associated with that are continued to be sought and maintained, particularly as the Waterways Committee does its permitting dredging.
And I saw that note in there, and I just wondered if you could just tell me, have we been, didn't we used to have a regular beach nourishment program? And has that fallen off, or am I mistaken?
I don't think I'm equipped to answer the question. Don Hofer can probably answer that more effectively than I can. There may have been locations where there was more regular beach nourishment, but it really, in my understanding, related to when the dredging activities were occurring, more than related to our goals and our plan for beach nourishment.
So it's not really something that we're directing, but I wonder if there's some kind of a leadership role that we could take to ensure that there is some more activity in that regard, because beaches are dwindling, and we've talked about it in our planning board meetings, but it just doesn't seem to really happen, and I don't wonder who's really going to direct the effort to make sure that something does happen.
You know, I would recommend that if the planning board wants to dig into that issue, that you have a discussion with the Conservation Commission and the Beach Committee, and that's really where that's going to generate. It is, one, a fiscal issue, our ability to fund the beach nourishment, but moreover, it's the permitting ability to get the authority to place sand on beaches is a very difficult thing to do.
Right, okay, thank you.
And I think that's an understatement. I mean, we see our Beach Department struggle day in and day out to be able to make the public and customer service happy, but at the same time, try to protect the environment and the Falmouth Wetlands regulations, what they have, they abide by. So it would be great for you folks to engage in, as well.
Okay.
And if I may, that what's, what happens here is very similar to what happens in other towns as well, because those wetlands regulations are not the local regulations, they're coming from the state. For instance, I forget what you call all that stuff that, George, you know, what is all that stuff that lands on the beach in the morning? What do they call it, all that weed and?
Raccoon.
Raccoon.
It's a variety of things.
A variety of.
A variety, yes, and they call it the raccoon. You know, there's a raccoon, and it also interferes with people who want to go to the beach and swim, but there are state regulations that govern what you kind of can't do with the raccoon, and it's, every town has the same problem. So there are issues that puts the Conservation Commission and the Beach Committee in conflict, and that's just one of them. So you're right, it would be a good idea to have a meeting with both and maybe sort out some of these things, and maybe perhaps there is a leadership role here that could be pushed forward.
Okay. Okay.
It sounds like we need to have a meeting more with our state reps than anybody else, because other states don't have the same problems that we have with this. So we can spin our wheels all we want at the local level, but until we get the state involved to make some changes.
We could, that's very true. Maybe we should put together some of the things that's not only just relate to the beaches, that relate to state regulations that get in the way, and maybe have some joint, get some of our boards together and have joint meetings with our delegation.
Because what was proved in New Jersey during Sandy was the beaches that were nourished sustain the least amount of damage.
Interesting.
Yeah.
It's kind of just a tangent to this issue, but one of the things that's come up in our local comprehensive plan in dealing with the DPW and trying to plan on resiliency for storms, is they said something to us that I think we need to address. They said every time that a road or a bridge or an infrastructure gets worn out in a storm, they're only allowed to come in and fix exactly what was there. And even though that they know better ways of building, better infrastructure, they have the ability to do it, they're prohibited to do it because they can, the conservation only allows them to build the old-fashioned, pre-existing methods. So in essence, we're rebuilding things we know are going to fall down and not doing in the proper function. And I think that is something that we need to, as a planning board and probably you folks, need to take a look at in how we operate, that we try to fix that problem. Because, let's say a bridge gets knocked down in a storm and it has concrete footings, but right now, they already know the better way to do it is to put in dams on either side. They have developed a new sophisticated construction, but they can't do it because those things take months to get approved, and we've got to put the bridge in next week because we get the road back. So they just go back and do it the old-fashioned way, and we're doing, we're making mistakes over and over again, and I think we need to fix that if we're going to survive at being a coastal community.
Those have high fiscal implications.
Yeah.
But that goes back to state legislation. You can't tell a Conservation Commission, it's only because the state legislation says they have the authority.
We need to find a fix.
We also need to investigate.
We know what the problem is.
We also need to investigate what are the limits that the state puts on us, and what are our own limits that we're putting on ourselves? There may be some gray area there, so.
And it is no secret that the Falmouth Wetlands regulation is much more stringent than the state regulations. And, you know, that's a planning issue that we might talk about. We have X amount of miles of coastline in Falmouth, but only a certain small amount of coastline that actually the public gets to enjoy, which is our public beaches. We have two legislative sides in our community. We have two legislative sides in our community, one, the executive branch, which we all happen to be part of, as well as, you know, our Congress of the Town, Town Meeting. So that wouldn't preempt us from changing the wetlands regulations, and that would be an opportunity for the Planning Board in those specific public areas, meaning where the public beaches might be. So I mean, that would be a joint initiative, I'm sure it would be. I'm sure it would have some resistance in all aspects of this community, but there's, I can tell you that in the middle of the summer, when I'm anywhere near a beach, people come up to me all the time and ask why, you know, they're not better groomed, and it's no fault of the Beach Committee, I can tell you that. The constraints that are pointing against it.
I mean, we found hypodermic needles in the rac line.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no piping plover, go to walk, make a nest when the kids are playing and walking over the rac line. We all know that commonsense wise, but it just needs to be protected, and it's black or white. We need a gray area in some of those situations.
So we need to have some kind of joint initiative here to investigate how we can change the way things are done.
I can tell you that the, I don't know if you know, that the Selectmen in all the towns have an association, I can't, Selectmen and Conservatives Association, and that's one of the areas that were identified by the Selectmen, or all the towns on the case, and they're having a conference on that, I think it's the...
Week before Friday.
The February meeting.
The week before Friday.
No, not on this one.
I thought it was this one.
No, they're having a meeting, but specifically on the coastal issues, because that's my one to set up, my best assignment task of putting that together. And I think that's, I think it might be even later than February, it might be March or April, but I'll find out when it is, and maybe you can help me in terms of what we really should talk about at this, at this meeting. It's not just for an hour, it can usually be extended when there's an issue that's important to every single town, because we are the, we have the most coastline of any town in the state, so we have a lot of issues.
Yeah, okay, so we should be thinking about issues that need to be explored in this. Nancy's had her hand up for quite a while, George, may I recognize her first?
Auntie Hayward, Precinct 5, and I also am a member of the Falmouth Historical Commission, and I would love to discuss beaches. And some of Doug's comments. I would like to try to have this circle back to the Selectmen's five-year plan and to the Subcommittee of the Planning Board, the Comprehensive Planning Group, and I would like to make a comment about the Selectmen's five-year plan. I noticed that Mr. Leary said quality of life is one of the things that you're working with in your five-year plan. I would like to say that this is not the first five-year plan that I've had this mental comment about. I think it would be very appropriate if somewhere in there you could acknowledge the fact that the historical atmosphere of this town is one thing that should be kept in consideration when the EDIC and other groups, I have nothing specific I'm talking about, but that that is something I have never seen that even alluded to in the couple of five-year plans that I have looked at. And as for the Comprehensive Planning Group, several months ago, I did come to one of your planning meetings, and there was a comment brought up from the audience about the historical issue in the comprehensive plan, and an assistant planner there said, well, we're not addressing that now. So I do hope that comes at some point into consideration. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy. George?
We do have it listed as one of the third item of things that we're looking into for supporting the Mr. Selectman.
George Hampson, Precinct 5. Isn't very often I talk about issues, major issues, and change. What we're doing in our beaches and areas is that we're undergoing rapid change, and that's why I asked about the increase in water elevations. And as it turns out, in early 30s, they measured the elevation in Woods Hall, and it's increased about a foot. Now, that hasn't been published as much as it should, and it's not the same in different areas. But I would strongly recommend that along with these changes that we're talking about, that we take heed in changing the regulations. The old systems doesn't work, you just can't be putting down sand. We might need a major change. I mean, Chappaquoyt, for instance, what's the answer to Chappaquoyt? You all know that some one of these days, it's going to get blasted, and these people are going to be getting to their houses in boats. So we've got to think about a system. You're talking about a bridge. You're talking about an elevation bridge to get to one side to the other. So may I suggest that we have some way in the five-year plan, and the coastal, the group that I'm with, we're also doing this, that we think about the future and plan for the worst. I mean, it's not going to be easy, folks, it really isn't. I mean, people are going to lose their houses, like they do in Nantucket, not as fast, but there's erosion that's going to take place, you know? We haven't gotten the big hit, we're avoiding it big time. So that's my suggestion, is to think about way ahead, and push the Conservation Commission to say, let's think outside the box, let's do something different, you know? Thank you.
Thank you, George. This is one thing that the Planning Board is tasking our planners on, to spend a considerable amount of time amongst all the hundred percent of their other time that they allocate elsewhere is to look at resiliency planning. And so we're starting to build a library on that, and we're starting to look at it as a whole, as the Planning Board, as to what it's going to take for long-term resiliency for the community. And Sandy was the instigator for a lot of that. Was supposed to be zeroing in on us, and it hit New York City instead. So, okay, are we ready to move on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. So it's the parking issue, downtown parking meters.
My mind began, we're Selectmen being the capital advisory committee last December, to look at ways of either reducing costs or increasing revenue to be able to fund the capital needs in town. We chose to look more at revenue production than at cost reduction. We put the direction to, the Department has to look at cost reduction, really didn't feel that that was something we could use much time and energy into. And looking at funding about a $3 million capital plan on the, what we consider the level two capital needs, the level ones are the ones that we might be able to handle on a yearly basis. The level three were the ones that were way bigger and are going to need overrides, and these are the ones that are sort of in between. Looked like if we could get $3 million a year, we might be able to fund that. And so we came up with a list of items, and I think you'll have a copy of our report. The Parketers on Main Street was a major fundraiser that we looked at, and that was one of the recommendations of the committee. My feeling individually is this is a bigger issue than just Main Street. It would be useful to have a committee, an ad hoc committee, to look at parking, because it is a Main Street Town, Town issue, it is a home place issue, it is a Woods Hall issue, and I think it should be looked at comprehensively as opposed to just specifically Main Street dollars. And we recommend that that would be something that maybe the Planning Board and Board of Selectmen could have representatives, and then also from the Police Department and other organizations, to come up with a committee to look at it, as opposed to really getting into much of a discussion this evening just on that one issue.
Paul, do you have a comment?
Oh, yeah, my comment was that any priority areas for supporting business and so forth, Action Out 1.2.3 talks about a best parking management needs in the community, and I think that needs to be done before we start doing this piecemeal by putting in parking meters. I think that's an important element, not only for Falmouth, but Woods Hall as well, so I would encourage you to do that initially before moving forward. And it may be appropriate to build on what was done in the past. About five years ago, Transportation Committee did do a report. I know it was not endorsed, it was not finalized, but there was a lot of good information in that, and it might be helpful to at least get that information, build on that rather than start from scratch.
Jim?
I have a question. I understand the need for raising revenues. I remember being on the Beach Committee when we used to have swimming lessons and everything for free, and every year you have, the fees have gone up, and that's, we've been taxing people through fees. You need money from someplace. I think it's a really big mistake to go after parking on Main Street. What I'd really like to suggest, that you go to the town assessors and take a look at the impact of the improvements we've made on Main Street with moving the lighting, the paving, just the whole thing, and take a look at the value of the buildings, okay? Take a look, the buildings are sold in the last year as they compare to assess value. There's some specific properties that I've brought up to the town manager, and there's going to be more. You take a look at the increased revenues of that, and think that is what we're gaining. We have made a very unbelievably successful Main Street. We have people that are just one of the red space, people that want to have restaurants. Putting parking in it is just going to make it much more difficult. There's got to be another way to do it. I think if you take a look at the revenue, that not only that you are going to get in the next two years from increased value based on sales of property, it'll way offset the nuisance that you're going to create for the customers of the people on Main Street coming in. And that particular item, I'm biased to it because I'm a commercial realtor, and I sell buildings on Main Street, I live and work on it, I think it's a really bad idea.
Kevin?
I think it's important to note, just so everybody knows, this was a report from the Capital Advisory Committee. The Board of Selectmen have only had a presentation from the Capital Advisory Committee. Both Doug and Brent were our representatives, and there were a multitude of suggestions they came up with. Typically, there's always a lightning rod in the barrel, and this happens to be one of them. I don't think the Board of Selectmen has surely made any decisions on it whatsoever. My personal belief is there is time and a place for a meter, and in this situation, I don't think that is the time and the place for a meter on Main Street. However, there may be some areas where Doug's saying that he's talking about, that we should get together collectively and move forward to think about parking as an issue, same thing with what Mr. Dwyer said, all over this community, it would be good. He's thrown in all of rich, right now, he's the vice chairman, but he's running the meeting on our behalf, and I think it's a great idea. I hadn't heard it before. Couple of us, a couple of you, and get the people who actually do these things, probably the town engineer, someone from the Police Department, will sit down. We can break out all those other books, but go through town by town. I mean, might be that we want to just say we're going to chalk tires on Main Street, on Main Street itself, because we all know that sometimes you see people getting out of a car with a beach chair, and they're not, you know, I know I don't want my employees parking on a meter spot, because they have to leave park, they have to leave work to feed the meter, and that spot is someone that, one of my customers should be in. So, I mean, we have a gray area here, and it's an issue that we can solve. Financially, we were prompted a few years ago to come up with the Capital Advisory Committee because the economy. We had some capital needs of roughly $3 million on a yearly basis, but by sound fiscal discipline, the Board of Selectmen has come up with an additional approach. I don't think it's going to get us there. We put away 0.25% of our increase last year from our budget. We're adding an additional 0.25 this year, so, plus we take in the meal tax. So we've dedicated $1 million, or roughly thereabouts, this year out of the budget without doing, going outside the box, going after the consumer. And we also had some free cash, as you recommend, at Brat Approach. That's a thing of the economy, but we need to come up with a funding source for capital. This was just one of the things that was on the table. I want folks to be reassured, it has not been invented, it has not moved forward just by the fact it was presented. But I think what Doug is saying tonight, maybe it brought forward, that we have parking issues. You know, Paul brought up the fact of the Transportation Group. You and I speak about when folks leave town on a bus. I mean, there's another parking issue. Things in Woods Hall, East Falmouth sometimes, you know, there's folks that struggle with parking. Beaches, the other area that there's a parking issue. I mean, a few of our beaches are overwhelmed, and the parking can't handle them. So I think it'd be a great idea, and I just want folks to know, this bus has not left the barn on charging people at meters on Main Street, at least in my mind.
Well, I was on the Board of Selectmen when we voted to remove the parking meters, and I know that, and there was a reason for that, and that was some, the whole purpose was to open up Main Street, to make it accessible, available to everyone, to help make the businesses thrive, and it coincided with the revitalization of Main Street as well. That was the whole idea. We did those surveys, how long do people really, there was truck studies, how long do people really park? And at the time, we found that very seldom is anybody there over two hours. Very few stay two hours. Most of it is pretty rapid turnover, and you'd have to look at all the businesses we have. How long do people stay in a bookstore? Maybe 15 minutes, maybe a half an hour. How long do people stay in some of the other, maybe they're just there for 15 minutes and they're out? So maybe they're there to pick up something and leave, so that then, would that then become an aggravation? So I look at parking meters as a solution to a parking management problem, rather than as a means to gain revenue. And I know that's one of the results or the outcomes of it, but the whole purpose is because you have a management issue with parking. And I'm thinking that if it were to be done, I don't think it could ever be just Main Street, because I think there's so much angst on people's part about having to come down and put money in a meter. If they were going to a restaurant that had a meter in front of it, they'd go to somewhere up the street to a restaurant that didn't have a meter. I think the other thing too about it is that in cities, people, the cities have parking meters and parking lots as a distance center because they want people to ride public transportation. They don't want you to bring your car to the city, they want you to leave it at home. Well, that's not a problem for us, because we don't have that high level of public transportation yet, so we don't have to have the parking meters for that distance center. It's the only way people get here is with their cars. That's kind of the way it is right now. So cars are the, usually the only, here, almost the only means of transportation. I think too that if your town is small, and we're small in comparison to a lot of other towns. I know in Plymouth, when they were looking at revitalizing their Main Street and also the waterfront, the, I forget the name of the street, they took all the parking meters off Main Street, and that wasn't too terribly long ago. And then they do have a lot, they created some municipal lots in little places so that people who wanted to come in and shop, they couldn't park on Main Street, or didn't want to park on Main Street, they could park in a municipal lot for a lower fee. And down on the waterfront, I know there's one restaurant that has valet parking, so that people who go in the restaurant don't think they have to put money in the meter. And it's one of those meters you never save twice. In all the 14 years I'm in Plymouth, I've had two violations, because I forget that you have to go over to some kiosk and put your money in the kiosk, and then put your slip in the car, so I end up with a $15 ticket. It happened to me twice in 14 years. Think I'd know better. But anyway, so everybody looks at it as a solution to something, and is it the best solution? And if it doesn't, if it isn't a solution, then we should look for other ways either of getting revenue, and I think, Jim, you made a very good point... And I think, Jim, you made a very good point about looking at the value. Main Street now has so much value to this town, it's huge value. There isn't any time of the year that you're not down there, that you don't see lots of people going in and out. So I think we have to never do anything that changes or reduces that value, but anything we do should enhance the value and not take away from it.
Doug?
And I just, oh, I'll be quick. I just don't think that we're in a position to even have parking meters when our Town Hall Plaza is so overwhelmed with traffic all the time. I think it's barely manageable now. And if we had parking meters out there, we'd have a disaster here.
The idea would be to actually have paid parking around.
Everywhere.
Town, not just Main Street.
Oh, in this lot?
I think that's it.
Wow.
Without the meters, there would be something like the kiosks somehow charging for it. I mean, I think if you just put meters on the street, we knew that would not be the right idea.
I didn't understand that part of it. Okay.
I think that would create so much angst, it wouldn't be worth it.
Absolutely.
I mean, think about all of us who come here to Town Hall to take care of town business. If we have to pay to take care of town business on top of expending our hours, that's really slapping us in the face.
We're going to need a raise.
Again, it'd be a lot of.
A raise.
The scheme that we had in mind would be you could buy a permit, bypass it, have it in your car for those people here all the time saying, then you don't have to feed it because you're a resident who pays their taxes and for a $50 fee, you can park it all the time. These are some of the things that we scheme. But again, it's ways away from proposing that where I think that having more information beyond the Capital Advisory Committee, having the planning board involved, having the police department, Department of Public Affairs, Selectmen involved to look at, do we want to do anything or say, no, it's a bad idea.
My input is too much angst.
Incidentally, and just to bring something else on the table here, if you put together a committee like that, the Steamship Authority rents a lot from the town in Woods Hole. And that lease is due to expire in December of 2015. So we could have a committee positioned that could be working on what we want to do with that. No one is saying that it necessarily has to go back and be leased to the Steamship Authority. It could be some kind of blend. I don't know. But it would be a better committee if we had folks on, not only from the Board of Selectmen, but folks from the planning.
I agree.
And if I could just add too, that the meters in Woods Hole, not only on the street, but there are meters in the parking lot, some along the parking lot, are really there for a solution. Because if they weren't there, people going to the vineyard, which is not on the street. I mean, that's a pretty obvious problem. But that was the solution to that problem, was to have the meters so that people going to the vineyard and using the ferry would not park there.
Christiane, please come up there to the podium.
Well, I don't know, should I really stand up?
Yes, you should, because otherwise people in our viewing audience can't hear.
Christiane Collins, I live in West Falmouth, but I also have, although I'm not a member of the planning board or of the special committee that was meeting always on Wednesday afternoons, which I found extremely interesting. But I would, my background is urban planning, so I have some knowledge of what you're talking about. But in relation to what Pat Flynn was saying, I have for a long time thought that the solution to Main Street, which I find very fascinating, is not parking meters. That would just go backwards. But what you'd need for the future is to have certain parts of Main Street turned into pedestrian zones. And this does not have to be permanent every day, every stretch. But it should be certain, let's say Saturdays, and it should be announced beforehand so that people with cars know that that's going to happen. But the, it has been proven that if you turn actively, active streets into pedestrian zones, the business goes up enormously so that actually the income that would be generated would be from that. Now, this of course would involve more planning of transportation with cars and with bicycles, but also with pedestrians. Because people really like to walk. And if they can park in an area or have smaller vehicles and vans that carry more than two passengers from certain spots where cars could be left, I think this just takes a little more planning. But I think pedestrian zones don't really need a lot of preparation or planning to carry forward on an experimental basis. For instance, certain weeks in the summer or during the holiday season, now for instance, after Christmas, after Thanksgiving, or also around the Christmas season when there might be, or at least we should encourage lots of business, that it should be announced, oh, wonderful, we'll make two or three blocks from Main Street into a pedestrian zone. Let's celebrate the fact that everybody can walk around and shop. Now, you see, this not, it's just sort of a plan to beautify the thing. There's a financial aspect to creating pedestrian zones, but parking meters, ooh. That scares people away. Because, and even in Woods Hole, for instance, it's a very disagreeable feeling. So, excuse me for giving you this little talk on pedestrian zones.
It's fine, I think your input is quite valuable.
Ralph? I'd like to know whether the presentation that you received included any testimony from the business community, the Village Association, Downtown Village Association, or the Chamber of Commerce?
It was a kernel of idea that's supposed to then lead to that inclusion. I mean, it's not, it was, these are brainstorming, coming up with 15, 20 ideas, and that would be the next process system beyond it. It is not the point of really being a recommendation that the Board of Selectmen has discussed. We're nowhere near making ready for a vote on it. And what I'm saying is I think the next step is let's look at not parking meters on Main Street, let's look at parking as a much bigger scheme. And parking meters on Main Street may be a piece of it, it may be immediately dismissed as not a piece of it, but still parking in downtown Falmouth is a problem. And as Pat's saying, one solution could be looking at that, but I think there are, right now, people do not come into downtown Falmouth because of the success of downtown Falmouth during the summer because they can't park. And then we already have that problem. And I think there are other issues that we can look into with Mr. Brown.
I think this is a stroke of genius, putting downtown parking meters on the agenda because it could be the catalyst for a better conversation about transportation in general and particularly public transportation. We've got school parking lots that are vacant during the summertime that we could have satellite parking for the beaches or for downtown, but the public transportation link is not there. And I really think we need to push for that. And we have a Transportation Committee that kind of went by the boards, and I think that needs to be resurrected and, because this is an important issue in this town.
You know, it's interesting that you're absolutely right. And you're absolutely right about this parking lots being empty. And I love Christiane's idea, you know, of, remember one New Year's Eve, we did close off Main Street to celebrate New Year's Eve? We had dance floors in the middle of the street. And it was great and it was fun. And the idea of closing it off, if you could, if we could generate the thought that people can park at them, Mullen, or the Morse Pond School or the Lawrence School, or park up there and create a walking area with the library lawn and closing offshore street extension and all that, it would make for a really nice, a nice feeling on Main Street.
Well, you've got Mullen Hall right here.
Yeah.
All summer.
Right.
You know, I was talking to someone just the other day who was reminding me that many years ago, when government was small and they didn't have big taxes and big financing programs, when they wanted to have a capital project, they had lottery. And that was how they funded. If they needed a bridge, they'd have a local lottery. I don't know if that's something that Falmouth could do, but we could ask about it. Designate a target project and say, we need a new roof at Mullen Hall School, so we're going to have a lottery for that. Who knows?
As long as it wasn't done publicly, I guess, you could probably do it privately. I read about that in the New York Times recently, where some town just did something like that. Where people got together and just, they needed something and they just decided they were going to raise the money themselves and they did it and it worked. Yeah, so there's.
Chair, just a couple of things if I may. I'm no expert on this lottery concept, although I've been in places where it's been suggested. I think there is a state remission that removes municipality's ability to do that, other than unofficially, which is maybe the way to go, which you suggest, Mr. Brown. But I wanted to underscore also, Selectmen Jones' emphasis that really this analysis is about a series of talking points. And we had a number of very dedicated people, including Selectmen Chair Brent Putnam, who chaired this group, and Doug Jones, of course, was the vice chair that met for many months and took quite a bit of testimony. And it's generated, as we all know, a fair amount of interested dialogue. And I'd be remiss if I didn't note, because I've had multiple discussions with Jay Zavala from the Chamber of Commerce. And Jay spoke to me today, actually, recognizing that this was on the agenda, asked if I would just transmit, and again, this is unofficial because, I mean, the concept is unofficial because the Board of Selectmen has not taken it up, has taken no vote on it, there's merely, there's been a presentation, it's a talking point. But we appreciate all the input and it has been fairly dynamic. As an example, Jay Zavala confirmed that the Board of Directors of the Falmouth Chamber has voted unanimously in opposition to any proposal to return parking meters downtown. And Jay's mentioned to me that this is, was in, also within consultation or with consultation with the Downtown Village Association, who are, you know, significantly represented, obviously, in the chamber. So I did want to transmit that on Jay's behalf. I mentioned to him that I would, so I passed that along as well, Chair.
Thank you. Okay. Paul?
I'd just like to mention, I think this is a wonderful meeting. And I think a lot of issues have come out in a very respectful manner. And I think we probably should have more of these meetings because it's been very helpful, I know for me personally, and I'm sure for the rest of the planning board. Thank you.
Yeah, I think this has been extremely valuable tonight, just this low-keyed exchange here that we'd have, it's great.
Chair, one other item that I overlooked at the beginning, I do apologize. Two members of the Board of Selectmen, Brent Putnam and Rebecca Moffett, are unable to be here and they asked whether, if I would kindly note their regrets at not being able to attend. They had prior commitments this evening. Otherwise, they would be here and certainly are respectful and supportive of the whole process, so they regret their inability to be here. I want to pass out one.
Just in a vein of levity, just tell them they created extra work for Brian because he had to undo the U and rephrase the British.
Do we notice?
Can I say?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you for letting us sit in your chairs tonight.
Well, it's Tuesday night, there are chairs. That's why we're wearing blue tonight. We went with the color.
Ralph?
Yeah, I noticed that item one, 1.2.3, which is what we've just been talking about, has a bar that starts in 2015. Is that your intent?
Sort of spans it.
It has the action bar.
What item are you talking about? I'm sorry.
Addressing parking management needs assessment.
Need 1.2.3.
1.2.3 on the financial stability, the first section.
Fiscal year.
So we talk about it now?
Yes, these are fiscal years, not calendar years.
So we're getting some ideas and Kevin has suggested that we have sort of like a subcommittee of two of you, two of us, and start hammering away at it.
But I might say, I think some of this came about too because we had a lot of events this summer. And our pattern and practice of approving these events is people come forward with an application, we look at them, we, with their vetted, you know, in terms of where they are, what their times and all of that, we approve them. But then it turned out that we discovered that on one particular weekend, we were so over-evented, we have them everywhere. We have the Striper Fest over at Rainy Park, we have Classic Car Show over somewhere else, we had Boot going on here at the Village Green, and the traffic was just completely out of control. And you couldn't get to Main Street, much less get anywhere near it. So we really, so when we had the, one of the office staff, Diana, actually, put together the calendar to show us exactly what happened over the course of the summer and how many events took place on what days and at what times, and we realized what happened. So now we've changed that. We're changing the way that gets done so that we don't overload the town on particular weekends just because we didn't look to see what had already been approved at that date. So I think some of that parking management can be handled by having better event approval and planning, which we are working on now, so that we don't overload the town on certain days like we did this last summer. Plus the fact we had a lot of people here, which people today, it's because of Sandy, people couldn't get to the Jersey Shore, so they came here. And I'm sure a lot of that is true. It happened elsewhere on the Cape. So we did have a lot of people. So we had an inundation of a lot of events and a lot of people and it just created some problems for the months of July and August.
But it also says that we are becoming a town that is well-known.
Yes.
I know when I went shopping for a mattress off Cape, Jordan Furniture, two of the salespeople were telling me how Falmouth is a destination town for restaurants now. Because just along this area, we have so many different ethnic restaurants for starters, but just this huge array of restaurants. They were specifically mentioning, oh, God, Agnejo, what, the Italian restaurant here, King Palace, I mean, just this short stretch.
And people come from all over to here for the restaurants they do, especially the Mexican restaurant. They claim it's the only good Mexican restaurant on the Cape.
That's what they were saying.
People come from all over. It's true.
Yeah, I know, I know. I was thinking of that, but I thought, well, let's give credit where it's due. The restaurants are doing a really good job here in Falmouth.
It's strong. That's what, that coincides with the comments that Jim made and I made about the huge value and the French bakery now.
Yeah, oh, that was the other one that they mentioned too.
That has brought to Main Street.
We're going to have to mention all of them now.
Okay, let's talk, work our way up. I think this has been a fabulous meeting tonight. And if we're all feeling that we've accomplished what we wanted, I think I'd like a motion for adjournment?
I'd make a motion for adjournment now.
Second.
All in favor?